Meeting. We're gonna start the planning board meeting for the town of Freetown for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. I'll let the record reflect the members who are here. Anybody online? Yeah, somebody.
Yeah.
Anybody recording this meeting? No. Item number one, continued definitive subdivision thirty-two Middle Borough Road and zero Clermont Way. Applicant James Simmons, Simmons Development Incorporated. Owner, Richard Edmund. Our mind, Robert Clermont, representative Jason Youngquist. Scope of work, eight lot subdivision. Developers requested a continuation of this. We also have no feedback from our engineering group, so. Where I would need a motion. Motion and a second to. Continue this meeting until. January 7th.
January 7th.
January 7th, meeting 6:00 PM here.
Yes, January 7th, 6:00 PM, place station.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made. Second and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. So that will be continued until January 7th. Number two, definitive subdivision eleven Walnut Street, applicant Michael Beechey. Excuse me if I'm butchering your name. Owner, Michael and Aaron Beechey, representative, Robert Peruzzi. Town Health Engineering Incorporated, scope of work, three lot subdivision. Is Mr. Peruzzi here? Well. Floor is yours.
Evening. Somebody may remember this, this came up. Past summer, the previous owner. Previous owner.
Have a little guess.
Club that Torres. She ended up dropping out of it because. When you fill and replicate wetlands, you have to have a performance agreement and then you need two growing seasons. And we're already past the growing season, so she would have been sitting on the property for three years and she couldn't really afford it.
Yeah.
To do that. So this is the exact same thing that you guys approved a year ago under a new owner. I moved a couple of lot lines around a little bit between lots one and two because they've added a garage. Move those lines very slightly. Like five feet.
Yeah.
But everything else is pretty much the same.
To add a garage onto the existing house.
Garage onto the existing house.
Yes.
And we wanted to make sure we had enough room, so.
Be safe.
Move the two lines just a little bit. But we still have greater than seventy thousand for each lot. No changes in any of the engineering for the grading or the roadway turnaround. I believe the deputy chief already vomited and it was approved. Cemetery commission did have a comment about they wanted right of way to be able to access the cemetery. Here.
Yep.
So on sheet three, you'll see a small access easement.
Off to the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
Was that easement part of lot three?
Yes, it'll be over lot three.
Yeah, over, yeah.
That was at their request. They said either eight or ten feet wide, just half so they could.
Yeah.
Get in there.
Maintain it.
Because I guess currently they. They cross somebody else's property off of Mill Street.
Yeah, I think we did that at Hadley Heights down by the end. They wanted to.
Yeah.
Access out the back, yeah. So this is the same, that's what I was, that was my question. This is the same subdivision that was approved in the summer.
Yes.
Doesn't look like it changed.
With with just those couple of tweaks.
Yeah, the name change and.
The name changed? Yeah, the na- the street, yeah. It's it's now considered a minor private road.
Yeah, that was a mistake on my part. I had public on the on the cover sheet. I didn't even really notice it till I was writing copies. Clearly it should be private.
Any, this really doesn't apply to us, I don't think too much, but any issues with the easement being a property owner change? Over for Algonquin?
I believe Enbridge has already.
Or Enbridge.
Has already agreed to.
There's no issues with, I didn't know if there was a signed agreement with the previous owner and not that that's our.
They were going to transfer it from one owner to the other. I think it's already been transferred.
Okay, but that's not our problem, but I'm just curious. Everything else looks the same. All the, I remember Gary, you had a question on the on the grading of the road, everything, anything that we had requested before is is here. It's the same thing.
Yep. We haven't gotten approval from conservation yet. I I was late in getting responses to DEP, so they continue the hearing. They approved the. We separated the notice of intent between the garage and the subdivision. So that one didn't really affect the other. Something got hung up at one and didn't really affect the other. So the notice of intent for adding the garage. That was approved, but the notice of intent for the subdivision is. I'm gonna be on the night.
Concom.
On the concom.
Nights of this month, yeah. Waivers, are they identical to what was approved before?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Questions from the board? Go ahead.
Yeah, the. You know, the grading where the dwellings are.
Yes.
Clearly not showing like the regrading. And if you got like a two and a half foot sill, it's not showing a retaining wall at all. So I don't, I don't know, keep that grade without going at least five feet out. Further into the wetland. You know, it might be something. That would come up during construction, but it would be kind of a surprise to the owner, I would think, you know, if it's not shown. You know, wouldn't have to be. All the time, well, but it looks like you got, you know, you're gonna have to strip out some material. Then bring in two and a half feet of. You know, a four and a half fell with a twelve inches of gravel. It looks like, you know, it looks like it might might be an issue. As far as, you know, keeping. Keeping the grade. If, you know, to to the proposed grade without without retaining wall. Unless you can encroach five feet. You know, onto the, you know, more to the weapons, into the weapons.
What is it, Steve?
One of the other meetings we had that they were letting us stand the right hand side of the road into the wetlands here. And supposed to move the wetland material that they move in.
Yeah, it looks like this whole area is. This my area and.
The applicant gets back issue most, yeah. Questions, any other questions? Yeah, anything? You'll come back to us with some of that information.
Sure. I'm gonna answer there. I'll check with the engineer.
Okay. I mean. We'd already approved this before, so I mean, most and and everything's the same, so. Should be pretty minor, but we will. Continue the meeting on in two weeks. Yeah, would that be a problem? You'd have a, okay. Well, go ahead. You're gonna ask.
No, just say more.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, yep. Members of the public, if you'd like to speak, just say who you are and.
Do we need to motion to wait for the public hearing notice?
No, I I read it. Where's the public hearing notice?
That's the thing that I post on the legal, like the legal notices.
This?
No, that's just the agenda.
We don't know.
No, we usually move motion to wait for the public hearing, right?
No, we're really open to the public.
Oh, okay.
With, yeah.
We've never, we've never not looked at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we'll just.
So do you need a motion to go up there, is what she said?
Yeah.
Make a motion over.
I think so.
Yeah. Same, yeah, might as well.
Well, we already opened the meeting for this.
The whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't think I have to do anything else. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm sorry.
Just state your name and.
Just name your name and and then ask a question. Well.
Christine Johansson. John Johansson, or of others on Mill Street. We have two pieces of property that are.
Yep.
You got a plan over this for the planning board meeting?
This is the planning board meeting.
I'm sorry, the conservation meeting, but we didn't get one.
What was the address?
Twenty-four Mill Street, Arizona. We should have received two.
I have this one.
Did I sign that?
I don't know if this is your thing. It just says, see Johansson?
No, that's not us signing that.
I'm not sure what we do about that then. It's their address and everything.
It's not Charles or Christine signing that?
Nope.
Holy smokes.
I don't know what we do about that. I've never had that.
Anybody? No.
Huh?
Somebody falsified this?
Yep.
Definitely has a signature on it.
Any notice for tonight's meeting? We did not sign a certified letter. We got them two of them for the conservation meeting, which we signed and took the letters. We didn't get anything signed.
Okay, well, I'll have to investigate. I have absolutely no idea what. What that entails. Yep.
That's something I guess you'd say for the post office and police department.
Yeah.
Remember, there was one address that we had wrong. We had six instead of eight.
Yeah, that was Weaver. Yeah, the the Weavers, that was theirs, but this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that was though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll show you my signatures. It'll look like that.
Yeah, if you call me tomorrow, I can scan this in and send you an email of it and then you can bring it to the post office or the police and see what you can maybe do about that.
Yeah, because that's your issue.
But I I have to also find out probably from town council what we do because is this even this meeting, but anyway, we're.
Right.
Getting continued anyway.
It'll get continued anyway, but.
Yeah.
We just had questions about, because we own those two abutting lots. And according to what I'm hearing, because I haven't seen any plot plans or anything, but what I'm hearing is this new private road is gonna abut the stone wall.
It is going to abut the stone wall. There's a.
Isn't there some sort of like setback or streets next to somebody's property?
I'm not sure what the rule is on private roads. Because this is not going to be a public road.
Yeah, it's just concerning that they're running a road like the gas.
Yeah, they've got the signed waiver from the from the gas company, so. Hello. I do not know what the rules are for a public private road. Anybody can help, private road setback off of property lines or anything. I thought we sent this out to environmental partners. We didn't, I can't remember. I just have to look it up. Yeah, yeah.
I'm curious, were you notified in the summer when we gave this to Torres?
Unfortunately, he fell and fractured seven bones this summer, so I was otherwise occupied. Playing this game.
I was just wondering if, you know, the address mix up if.
Well, no, because we got the conservation commission.
Right.
Meeting notice, two of them, because we have two pieces of property he signed for.
Yeah, we use the same address list. I mean, it expands because it's three hundred feet for planning and zoning and it's a hundred feet for conservation, but. I think it's the same.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm not donating what you're doing. I'm not donating what the town hall is doing as far as sending them out. My concern is we never receive them.
Yeah.
And then it went up to critical levels when I see somebody else signing our name.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be concerned about that. That's why I'm just wondering here. We got the other ones.
I honestly.
Yeah.
He's fractured his arm. I have no idea what happened this summer. You know what happened this summer? Nothing.
Okay, yeah, because we'd we'd done gone through this and actually approved the subdivision, then the next day it was pulled, so.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, we weren't.
Okay.
We weren't able to participate over the summer. And then it just came up again. I was actually down at the town hall asking about something else because of Weaver putting up that building right on the the corner of the cemetery. That's also been in discussion. So I'm down, I talked him down about that and found out that they were gonna manow the information for the conservation meeting. So it was on my radar.
Okay.
And I saw it on the. Bits, whatever the plan.
Town, yes. Well, we'll certainly look in, we'll look into that legally and also find out what the rule is on the on a private road. Coming into a subdivision, if there has to be a setback or if that's a waiver that would be asked for us. I don't think that's on your waiver list. There's no.
I'm not aware of any requirements.
Yeah, I I can't answer that off the top of my head. I don't know. I'd have to look into it.
Okay, I appreciate it because it was, that's like our big concern is, you know, it's beautiful woods out there. We have deer and wildlife and whatnot out there on a regular basis and it's private. So we, and this road, if it goes right up to our stone wall, I don't know. I don't know how I feel about that.
All right, well, we'll find out the answers to those two questions. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions on this? So I will ask for a motion to. Continue this public meeting until the.
Next one is the December seventeenth.
December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, 6:00 PM here. And if there's a legal issue with that. Which shouldn't be. I mean, there shouldn't be with us continuing. I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, I know.
With us continuing, I don't think there should be any issues there.
We're ranch, like right in the middle of it. I'm sorry.
So and you'll get some information on on what Gary was asking about.
Yeah. State law says they have to be notified a certain amount of days.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure. I mean. You're notified if you're here, but.
You weren't legally notified.
It doesn't work like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to, I'm gonna.
It's unlocked that I found it.
Yeah. So we will, we'll find out what the deal is on that and whether the seventeenth has to be pushed back because of, if that's, if it caused an issue, I don't know, so. So I. I'm looking for a motion and a second to continue this meeting until the.
December seventeen.
December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, 6:00 PM here at the fire state, at police station.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose nay. So we'll continue until two weeks from now. I'm sorry about what's happened. We'll we'll try to dig in and find out what happened.
Yeah.
Mommy tomorrow, when I can send you a copy of the card.
Actually, we got a conference call, town council on Friday. That's what item number three will be on there, because I don't know what, I mean.
Who knows, if you have a relative in the house, signed it without them, you know. It is wrong.
Wrong, we have to look into it. Yeah, no, no. Okay. You guys are good, yeah? Sorry for the issues, but we'll go, we'll get there. Agenda item three, chapter sixty-one A, right of first refusal, donation, eighty-one Middle Borough Road, map two four three, lot seventy-nine, parentheses, portion of bog. Owner Elton and Anne Marie Ashley.
Robert Nasser is on soon.
Robert Nasser is the representative?
Yes.
Or.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Good, so the, this is a request by the Ashleys to remove a portion of their land from the sixty-one A designation. I don't have the map to be able to share with you. I did give it to Nicole at the office, so I don't know, maybe. Unfortunately, I just didn't, I don't have it with me to be able to put it on the screen this evening.
She's got it with us, so we're good.
Okay, so if you could pass that down, it shows, it highlights the area. It's a portion of their cranberry bog directly behind the Ashley's house. It's about two thirds of an acre approximately.
Okay.
And so we submitted the request to the planning board, select board. Conservation, who we've already been in front of, so we've got the DEP file number and the permit from conservation on the project. That was our first step. And who else? With Mike McQ over at the assessor's office, we have the the notice into him as well.
And so it's our, it's the town's right to purchase this if you. So if if we so desire.
That's my understanding, correct? Yeah, I think that's true.
Otherwise, it gets it gets it gets the town a little more tax money because it'll be, it'll be taxed at a residential rate instead of agricultural.
I think it actually gets, I have my conversation with Mike, it actually gets taxed at a commercial rate, so you get even a bigger bump. And when you take it out of the agricultural, you actually have to pay the back taxes to as well. I, you know, I'm not sure how fa- how far back it goes, but yeah, there's some tax revenue to the town for sure.
Have to do that, okay. Everybody, yeah.
I think it's five years.
I I don't. Yeah, show that. It's a four hundred square foot, somewhere around there. So the question in front of the board is whether we should. We think the town should go after it. They're gonna put solar panels on it? That's what the the little map shows, yeah?
Correct.
The, any reason the town should go after it?
I don't see any.
Steve, anything? No. So I would need a motion to say that we we don't think the town. Should go forward with a purchase of this. Or I'm not. Are we, I don't know what the legalese would be for this, but they should, the town shouldn't go forward with.
Trying to pursue.
Try and pursue. Taking ownership of that, purchasing ownership of that portion that they want to return.
I'd make a motion for that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose nay. Okay, planning board doesn't think the town wants it, so. Free to tell the owners.
I will, I will pass it along. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
You too. Cheers.
Bye, bye, Nicole.
Bye.
Thanks for bringing that. Do you have that sheet? Item four, any other business to properly come before the board? The next meeting, just as a homework assignment, review the. Master plan. I think you sent it out to everybody.
Yes.
We're, I'm trying to get a a meeting with the master plan committee. Like I said, we have to kind of give it our thumbs up or thumbs down sometime in January, February. And they have to do any modifications that we may see by the end of the year, so we need to give, we need to give them a couple of weeks, especially given us the holiday, so that's the absolute last day. Entertain any, anything, any thoughts or or questions and. I'll try to let anybody know when the, when the official master committee meeting is, in case you want to show up. But. That was one thing. The other thing is, and we should probably plan this for the new year, I took a quick peek at. Fees for filing subdivisions and. We're not making the money. Most of the towns around here are. I sent Nicole a couple of the, did you, did you look at them? Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're way, we're way under, so and I don't know. Do we just say, hey, we're gonna make it this? Do we have to? Do you have any idea?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I don't know if we can just make the changes or if we have to hold a public hearing for it.
Okay, but well, yeah, I would assume we.
Probably have to go to a public hearing, but.
And then to a town meeting. I'm not sure if I ask for a town meeting as well.
Wow, okay, so then if there, if it is, then we have six months, but. Wow, okay, so then if, if it is, then we have six months, but. We should probably try to schedule it and get a, you know, I, I, I looked at Lakeville, Berkeley and Dayton, and.
What are they?
One of them was a thousand dollars a lot, and we're only a hundred dollars.
We're only a hundred, I mean, we're, we're losing free money, you know.
Yeah.
Not only that, you're opening up, everybody wants to come build a pre.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you get competitive with the towns around you, they're gonna spread it out.
Yeah, we should, we should be competitive anyway, with, you know, so. Besides those three, we should probably get a couple others, you know. And we'll come up with a spreadsheet, and some of them are different, some have more per lot, some have a more, an upfront cost, so. It's definitely worth our effort to, to do that, so we can pull in a few dollars for the town. So I wouldn't, we won't schedule that until next year sometime, especially if, you know, if you. Ask somebody, or if I see Kevin or somebody, what, what the proper way of doing that, especially if you have to go to town meeting, that's. That's tedious, we'll have to get our, so. Maybe the first, first meeting in February, the last, or the second one in January, sometime like that. Anybody else have any other?
Did you ever get a hold of town council?
I'm calling town council on Friday, so I'm gonna ask them about that, I gotta ask them about the. The accessory units. And I've gotta now ask my guests about this, what. If this is our issue with the. Signature or what? So I've got three agenda topics, I'm calling her at nine thirty, so. So if it doesn't keep going up. So, anything else? Anybody? So, Nicole, anything?
No.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn then at. Six thirty.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, all, to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.